Business.
By the way, it's to the flag of the United States of America and to the public for Richard Sands. While he should underdog into this world that we're ready to do in a rest for all.
Yeah, we will dive right into the public here on the potential dangerous building as six sixty eight Madison Road. Six lot four.
I don't know.
Oh, very good. Okay. All right. Dave Savage, code enforcement officer here, I'll take you through the highlights, you can take it through anything else after that. Uh, there is a property located up on the Madison Road map. Um, four lot six segment.
Yes.
And we received notice from A E Hudson. That they had completed a section of the property. Uh, and they needed to be on sale, so as part of that process, they notified us that it was a dangerous building but fit for occupancy. Uh, that it triggered a notice from the phone office while we're hearing. Uh, in terms of resolve and we has it exists. Um, today, so. Dave, if you wanna, you wanna join us?
Yeah, I'm glad.
Um, pretty much you covered everything. Uh, the owners actually just come in, people just walked in, the owners in the building. I didn't get a chance to make contact with them yesterday afternoon, so there is some information they want to corrupt the world in our Conway stands.
We are insured, just so you know. We have an active claim with our insurance company. We lost the chimney in the L of the house. When it was deemed unsafe, we have that report, but the main house is safe and we have that report. We have cleaned out the L, we were housed in a hotel for about a year. We cleaned out the L. And it is now occupiable, we have pictures of before and after. And the building was down. We're now negotiating with our insurance company for the remainder of our money. We have two lawyers, one in Houston and one in Portland that is helping us with this issue. We do have a plan, we have lived in that house. After we came back from the hotel, we've lived in it since January. Twenty twenty-two. We not having issue with fire, I do not feel unsafe. We have electricity, we have heat.
Okay.
And I'll give my, my husband's report and the picture.
Okay. A E Hudson came to the house for the wrong reasons. Okay. We have she air called him. We have, I have a, a two inspection. This is the first one, I'll cover it all you guys. This is the second one, we called him because I couldn't open the front door. And we thought the foundation might have shifted due to the chimney falling in the kitchen, which would make it an complaint with the insurance company. Okay, but that's not even in the report, I made two phone calls with him. He's not yet called me that. To go over this. Uh, I'll give this to you gentlemen, this was the first report. I underline exactly the issues and the main building where the chimneys are is perfectly safe. I'd say I underlined that there, I put that there for a reason. Because he said we had called him for a reason, that was the reason was the foundation. This is second, that's number one over there. These here are the pictures. The entire chimney had been removed from the kitchen. Okay, um, it's been totally done, it's still in working process, but these are the pictures here. To give you guys, I do have a point, it's major point, absolutely. Yeah, this is the start, I'll start it with you and then you can pass it on to me. This is what it looked like before it went down, is my dog. Before it went down, and this is what happened afterwards, I'll let you pass that around.
Okay, you can have that.
I can have this one. No, no, I have made a copy of that one. I'm just gonna, I'm gonna let our code enforcement officer look at this, I'm not gonna, you know, hold it thing, but.
This, this positive communication was what you received when you pack it.
Okay.
The other ones know we're getting copies of that.
Wow, is all this the same stuff I was in the email?
The.
Cause I read this stuff more.
I'm gonna plug him when we get a second. When we get to that point.
Well, Hudson letter that he just presented to the board is what you've already received, there's a new letter. If she's gonna make multiple copies, we'll circulate. Uh, Jim, what's it part of?
Yeah, so I guess for Dave. So is, is this an action at the town of Norwalk, is it bringing against a property owner, is this? I guess I don't know what's happening.
Yeah, normally if we get a recommendation or a letter from a, a engineer stating a building doesn't think we follow the dangerous building law, which is an action. That comes from the board on deeming a building, whether it's safe and habitable, but you know, occupancy, okay. So following the dangerous building state law.
That's why we're here.
Yes.
So Hodgson gets a call to come do an evaluation of property, he finds there is more of an issue than is suspected, and he notifies our code enforcement officer, and that's how that process starts.
That's how it's done, it could start anyway, I mean, we could have served it to the.
Sure. I don't know, the homeowner contacted us in my moving case, which we can't live there, or this is something that you obviously wanna stay there.
The complaint come from the third party person, which is the engineer that contacted the building.
Right, which by the way, I heard.
Thank you.
Not from the insurance company.
Sure.
No, it did say on, in the email that we got that the, the people who put this forward only didn't outside the home evaluation. With something like this, before something would be deemed like inhabitable, like, wouldn't it be important to see the structures like inside, like basement, like all that kind of like? I don't know, or is, I mean, I don't need these types, I don't know, like, can you just look at a house from the outside and pull that, or do you need to like look inside too?
I'm not sure if you did a copy, it's a letter from the engineer, but it looked like he did some visual inspection inside also, because you mentioned damage to the floors, walls, roofing. And actually the damage from the bare chimney falling actually caused the problems to the two other chimney building.
Okay.
You did mention that in the email, but. I think there was some display on the bottom that we wasn't, you know, attesting to the fact that this was a certified evaluation, you know, something along that line, just this was an observation, not a professional. Review, it was, it was an observation.
Yeah.
We have put a lot of work into the house.
Yeah.
Thousands of dollars.
Oh, I'm glad, I mean, it's a beautiful old house, like I would, I mean, hate seeing anything like that, like, not.
One thing you don't see in the photos there is I have pictures of the foundations, granite foundation. And all in pullback and realign, I can provide those pictures if you'd like to have those. This is the area where the chimney had fallen.
Just so you know, can I tell how to do? My husband is an electrical and mechanical engineer and he holds a federal electrical license. So the house has been redone electrically and it is safe.
I mean, you're well welcome to come back.
So I guess we're, I mean, when I've been on the world, we've never had anything like this in the month, so I guess I just, I'm. Confused as to what steps we take in this situation, I mean.
Listen, very good, I'm happy. So once the letter came in, the board asked to review, uh, based upon the ordinance that we have on dangerous buildings.
Okay.
Going forward, uh, it would fall to, uh, the code. To go in and look and make the observations on the repairs, whether he's comfortable with photos or requires a site visit. Uh, I think it's more in your purview than ours at this point. And again, I can speak for the entire board. But going forward, I, I do feel that it is with you and I, it's really a matter of common work. You feel you should move forward, uh, and when was your last visit, have, have you been?
I haven't actually been in the building, yesterday afternoon was the first time I actually spoke to Mr. Robbins, he got a letter from the man which triggered him to come in to, to be with me. And he did, once he got the letter.
Right.
So I learned what they've done yesterday afternoon.
Uh, I mean, for myself and only myself, uh, I mean, I am more than comfortable with you going out and making a full assessment of everything with the. Version of the land or the rest of the board here, uh, as well as, I don't, if you wanna chime in with any idea, you know, live this.
Are you willing to provide any area of expecting to the code of Western office?
Doesn't matter, I don't. Just keep it, just keep in mind, it's, it's still work in progress.
Do you have evidence, you've said you spent thousands of dollars on upgrades? You have receipts or whatnot to?
Yeah, fifty-four thousand dollars.
So you have receipt to that, apparently?
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Documentation, okay.
So we can email both.
So, the process of public hearing, of hearing isn't necessarily public hearing, and this is a new process, we've never been through this process, a lot of time we didn't. It's evidence gathering, so we receive this notice of prejudice hearing right here. Uh, there's a formal notice that we filed, the registry deeds about this and whatnot. Uh, my recommendation to the board would be to. I have a draft notice of hearing here. That we could serve to you tonight, that says that in two weeks we'll formalize that here. And then. Set forth all of these findings.
Do I set this to the mortgage company, or is mortgage companies involved?
We don't have a mortgage record through the registry deeds.
But you did the mortgage on the property.
Okay, so if you could provide us documentation of that?
Yep. We do not own that property for any particular.
Okay, we couldn't find anything on the registry deeds for that property, we only could find.
That's very interesting.
Another town.
It's interesting, yeah.
Cause we also have the owner record being a state. And the only reason you're being served is because your personal representative.
Yeah, that's correct.
Um. So the select board to sign this notice of hearing, serve it upon you tonight, to give all the extra costs, formally hold the hearing in two weeks. Gather the evidence of code, put it together, then we can make a recommendation. If it's still borderline questionable, then we could set forth, the board can set forth conditions through its facts and finding process to say the expectation, if we're gonna get here within this amount of time, and then that's legally gonna bind you. Uh, if you.
We would make, put me on notice to get H C line Z done.
Within this timeframe, so that it's now, it's a habit.
As long as it's reasonable.
Right, oh, right. Uh, and then if you did not come into compliance with that, then the town would be the mortal party, and then you'd be subject to covering the expenses.
So then the town would come in and did what they need to do to make it safe. Makes sense. I'm on your side.
Yeah, yeah, now, um. We expect to get money from the insurance.
And we are waiting. We can't, we don't have the money to front to do the, the rest of all these repairs.
That was gonna be my question, like, do we have, whatever timeframe we set, is there any sort of contingency upon pay, I mean? The pay, I mean, obviously the repairs have to be done.
I mean, the goal is that if they're living in this house, that the house is in a good, not.
Yeah.
So.
Yeah.
So they won't even require an order.
Okay.
We won't require what?
Uh, in the, in the verbal world, when you're back here in two weeks and we're gonna do five days of fact, there's not gonna be an order issued from the board. It's gonna be that your house is a safe enough place for you to inhabit. That's the goal coming out of two weeks' time. If what you've said is the project that you made, then that's hopefully we walk away from that. But we need to make sure that our bases are cut off, well, liability and negligence perspective.
Okay.
And that's why I did do the official, um, uh, with all the inspector. From the first guy down, and who said the main house, two separate houses, main house was safe to live in.
Right, the only other question I had is you said you had a couple of credits involved?
Absolutely.
Are they, are they involved with the declaration of a dangerous building?
No, no.
They're involved in other matters.
Yeah, the insurance company and the mortgage company.
Okay, thank you, so if you could provide us with the. Mortgage folder information?
Yeah.
That'd be very appreciated.
On your side.
Good.
Okay. So what do we need to do for a motion, just to sign the?
Close the hearing, and then it would be a motion to sign this, sign the notice of hearing, discover the hearing for December twenty-first, it's fixed.
So.
Okay, so move to close the hearing, is that the person we need to?
Yeah.
Oh, okay, so I'll order that, uh, public hearing closed. Uh, and we'll entertain a motion to sign the notice of hearing.
So moved. Second and a second, any progress, Scott? Do not hold favor. That's your end of it. Still in here, please. Look at that, that goes Dave, and then Dave, please go start that. We just need a more coffee, thank you. Okay. Uh, we gotta thank you guys for being here, and we are all definitely on the same side here, we'll wait much out of here, so we'll see, thank you for coming in at this.
Okay.
Good luck with the insurance, you always spend yourself on time, and when you need it back, it's.
Again, just keep in mind, just. Uh, David does a little agenda. Pretty good, man. There's nobody seconded, it's not just a base, not a, not a formal vote.
Yeah, there was nobody seconded.
Yeah.
We've got something that'll be going around.
No, that's, that, that back page is just rough. So we're gonna have him sign up top, you sign up bottom, and then we'll give him a copy of that front page, please.
And the owner, I read that though. This is what they just signed, again, you want by his joint. And it's your sign. Plus, they sent, that's a. And there's two copies.
One of those.
What's the same? Probably, you know, probably still sorry.
We want to do five minutes.
All right. We may will catch up with you maybe tomorrow next day, I just spoke to them.
Yeah.
In the bit, a couple of weeks before you did.
Why get out here?
We'll, 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 the two weeks, so we're gonna be back.
Okay.
Okay. Well, you call me tomorrow, I'm gonna do it, I'm gonna work with you.
We don't have your number.
Why do you sound like?
Mine.
Okay, thank you.
Again, thank you so much for coming.
I only, thank you guys.
I only.
Okay, we'll move right on to the public hearing on file development, uh, of proposed amendments to the town of Moonblock Cyclone Review Ordinance. To add regulations on commercial and community solar energy, uh, systems development and clerical updates.
Wow, there you go.
Okay, uh, this is here, we've set the ordinance through planning one process, it come back over here, unanimously been lost across all parties. Uh, I had sent that back through and made officer father adjustments, grammatical adjustments, select. Demanded to select board, that all, all the way through, the vulnerable developments that are incorporated into it, it gets documented, I don't think about. Uh, before we started my language, it was my intention, tonight the recommendation was. Oh, whoa, 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 here on this, in case there are substantive changes before we get into the process of town meeting, so. That's what we're here for tonight, there are booklets, the font's small, but because of the forty pages, I wanted to get it in total. There are booklets there and they're colored, so you can see what the edits are. Uh, but that's, I know where we're at.
So no subsequent changes from what we looked at the last time.
That's correct.
Clerical grammatic.
That's correct, yep.
I skimmed through it, but it's a big, great article.
Yeah.
Like the Affordable Care Act, you know, ten thousand pages, we'll figure it out after we get it, we don't want that situation.
Yeah.
So, and on the website, I don't know, dot com, the homepage, we saw that developing solar regulations, so you can see the solar regulations broken out. And then when they get integrated into second day review.
Okay.
Good. And.
Okay, here we go.
Public hearing spread.
Well, I, 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 obviously you brought along this and I thought, but, uh, is, is the mortgage going to go on, right?
Mortgage warrant was extended after the first hundred and eighty-five days. And that's gonna get us through the town meeting, so that this would be what people will consider a town meeting. Whether or not they want to enact the regulation on commercial solar. If the, if this is been enacted, the mortgage warrant has expired, then people are free to proceed.
So, what kind of steps are, uh, may recommend they have with ordinance? I mean, it, it's gonna get approved by the planning board, of course.
Yeah, we're gonna go through the planning board, it's a cycle longer to be processed, just with some enhanced regulation to be followed. Uh, the biggest things that were discussion points with the committee were setbacks and fence. Shielding from public view, uh, a lot of folks thought that, uh. Setbacks are satisfied. They needed for shielding, uh, they elected for minimal setbacks, kind of enhanced shielding from public view with a preference for preventative buffer. Uh, there are aspects about fire safety, events for the trainings provided to emergency service, their ability to respond, things like signage. Um. How you quantify the size of the facility, uh, being related to the fee was a big issue, there was discussion about the relevant fee into the ordinance. It's now set aside to the select board to set the fee. Uh, so we don't change the ordinance, we're going to change the fee. Uh, and it regulates solar that's not used on site, is really what it allows, cause that's a classification, so. If you need to put up a two acre solar rainier, some all that energy on your property, that's not regulated. It's when you're gonna, you know, your bigger facilities, the.
So, when I was here the last time, you guys, you discussed mortuary value per thousand. And that's not written in stones, what you're saying, according to the ordinance now, it can be adjusted?
So through the hearing process, uh, not being in the hearing process, the ordinance, the biggest concern that came was about the fee that would be charged.
It's not, it isn't really a positive.
Ball. So folks were concerned that it wasn't enough. And some folks were thought that it's too much. Uh, and we're still hearing that, some people are saying that the. So through that process, knowing that that was a sensitive issue, the select board said, we're committing ourselves to this for the purpose of fair public hearing. That if this ordinance is approved, then this board majority is reset, that that can be the fee, eight dollars per thousand of construction cost. Which on all our projects and with what we've seen permitted, uh, thirty-five thousand is what it could be for that one project costing, uh, one application fee. Uh, so some folks think that's not enough, some folks think that's too much. We've done a survey across the state, I think they're twenty-five or thirty communities that responded to us, and they range anywhere from five hundred to, you know, probably double what we're at. Uh, I heard from, well, Dave Savage actually was telling me today, there's a community that was emailing yesterday, and they have a recurring license, licensing for these facilities. So we don't have a licensing fee and, uh, simply be the one-time application fee upfront. As presented today.
Right, but it's not in the ordinance that it, it could change if deemed necessary.
With the, with, and the select board has the authority to set the fee.
Yes, okay, yeah, so that's not. Right now you're at eight dollars a thousand.
Right.
Is where.
Propose.
Propose, not on paper, but yeah, not how that, okay. So was, you think this is gonna stop, uh, solo people from looking at Norwalk for, or any of these solo?
So the intent of the ordinance wasn't stop, then, the intent of the ordinance was to protect neighbors, regulate, uh, have that respect, so. So I don't know, altogether, do I think thirty-five thousand dollars on a multi-billion dollar project is gonna shut them down from a business perspective? Probably not. If they've got access to free space and they've got good land, they're probably still gonna move in. But I think it's maybe, a lot of the conversation was it was a more fair for the people of Norwalk? That these were more contributing others of the community, helping with, uh, emergency services or education expenses, things like that.
It comes to expense, I feel, and that really is the biggest thing.
It might often be, you, you, I'm only, only because of. It's, the, the grid's only gonna take so much as of now, anything, until the infrastructure comes up, we won't, we'll get across this bridge for a while, cause. No, you're gonna be crossing this bridge, because the goal of the state is to be, what, fifty percent renewable energy by twenty thirty-five? So it, so, I don't go exactly.
Right, okay.
It is. So then, then it's all the.
Yeah.
And I can tell, you know, what.
Let me ask you this on, on, as far as that fee, is there, is that a set thing from here on out, or is that something like?
We knew we could have changed it on each place if you wanted to, not, not that you would do that, I'm just saying, it's written in the way it's set up now, we, the board. Set that fee per project, it's proposed at that eight dollar per thousand. But you could make it more, you could make it less, it would be at the board's discretion, and we all know that this may not be the same board.
Right. On Mars. Well, that's, I guess that's, I think is every year you could. Tweet it, I guess.
So to speak.
Well, that also.
Was not the intent of the, or the select board to block solar, right, to keep some of this happen.
It's really, I mean, oh, of course, twenty-five, yeah, percentage. There, I don't even know if it covers the training and ban hours suggested.
There's a lot of, yeah, you set back to rent that, but.
Exactly, it was a town, you put.
Yeah. And where we have like the ability to sort of.
Get like, you know, you can hear on that.
Yeah, a little bit, I'm sorry. Only mine, my wife, I could just give her a little thing, she would go kill me.
Um, where we have the ability to kind of set that, you know, that also, it seems like one of the big things that was coming up was they're building them at a certain size, and if they stay below a certain size, then there's no tax to be paid, but if they go over that size, then they do actually contribute to the tax base of the town, so I think that. Us having the ability to do that, it could incentivize a more profitable, you know, situation than to come in if they do a bigger one, but if they're designed to go smaller, it covers our bases for, you know, everything that we need, where they're not gonna be paying into taxes, you know, for that, so.
This is not intended to be a tax replacement.
Yeah.
This is intended to represent, uh, expenses that the town will incur as a result of that behavior.
So you're not taxing on the personal property tax when it's complete?
They, the fee has nothing to do with the tax.
The.
Yeah, okay, they, we will be taxing them, the property taxes.
But the business isn't being taxed on the creation of the electricity.
The owner of the land will pay the real estate tax for the land underneath.
Pretty much like you've been paying right along.
Yes, except they will not be in farmland, they won't be in the use program. Then the panels and equipment on the top will be assessed as personal property.
Right.
Which will depreciate rapidly. They will be entitled to apply for the business equipment tax exemption program to the state of Maine. Which will exempt if they're under five megawatt producing, will exempt them one hundred percent. And the state will pay fifty percent of the eligible tax amount back to us. So if it's a. A tax value of forty thousand dollars a year, one owner of said facility, zero. The state of Maine would pay a town of Norwalk twenty-eight thousand dollars.
Which comes on your tax base to be in the living. State tax. It's a bit.
I'll spread a little bit. Then, or this.
Yeah. Show one part, take a lot. So that's how they keep it under five minutes.
Well, the other part, it's, that was a switch out, they don't have to put in the testing. Eight for five minutes on a line. Those, which I.
Uh, anything else, Gus? Now you can think of more than, more than happy to have to answer any questions.
You think while we answer the question?
I think one point that Richard brought up, that, that if you got to a thirty thousand dollar application fee, if you look at the cost. That we're going to take on just by training the fire department annually to respond to an urgency or electrical situation at those facilities. Within a couple of years, if you train all your firefighters, that money's gonna be gone. That's gonna be a public service that we're gonna offer after that, so just that one specific line would eat up any application fee, so.
Well, I'm all for it, and it's not a couple of years, it's twenty-five years. I mean.
They are, but an aggregation fee is not gonna cover that training for twenty-five years.
That's what I think.
Exactly, so it's a pretty good deal if you look at it from that aspect, you know.
Not that we wanna make policy. Other talent, which I can tell you that Mercer being a part factor of our fire services, they're having a very similar discussion about what would the long-term impact be if they put a requirement in that? Fire department be trained, that's order law. Costs are going up. Their bills going up, if it generates a disproportionate number of calls, it's really gonna go up. Uh, and they've asked me to give them a letter of that because they have concerns. Just about that one line, I ended up, so, so what about?
Some of these solar systems have a, a battery system on, is, is that addressed in this whole?
Yeah, there are things like, there are containment units and things like that that are all a part of this now, that we have, you know, honestly, it's been goodwill. So far.
Uh, I mean, uh, the requirement is different for a battery system, solar?
No, it's all created the same. Community commercial solar, all treated the same regardless of whether it's storage on site or not.
So the community ones are not having to go through this?
They do, it's community and commercial, unless you're using it for your own use on site. It's gonna be subject to this.
But it, don't they have this? Group, you can get a group of people, right, to net meter off from, say, if I attend friends, different locations, grow count, and they wanted to participate in. And that metering system with their bill. Would, I mean, that would, at one site, that would be a little bit larger than a homeowner's.
Then you're gonna go through this process, okay?
Yeah, I think if it's not attached to your house or it's something.
Oh, you're gonna take group dog, we'll have to go through this.
No, if you're able to use the energy that is being produced, you can use that on site. You are exempt from the process, you're gonna be just on site play. You are exempt from the process. You're gonna be just site later review. You're not gonna be commercial solders.
So Norman, so Norman moves up to a deer farmer's stocks, he's on that electric. And he put a solar panels on his barn roof, which would be similar to something that he could do.
Right.
And he's, that's what, that's what he's talking about. Norman is producing enough power. Do, do Brian's building bad?
Yes.
His building built in five other households. That's exactly what he does. So that array on his. Rooftop that he's providing for himself plus. Five or six others would be.
You just found the one call and that's. And I'm sorry, roof mounted is gonna be different.
You're not gonna have a really big roof to make enough.
But he said a barn roof, but he said a barn roof that is bigger than Norman's.
Yeah.
Norman's, Norman's said his, doing so well, he's doing his own house. Brian's business and five other households in that town off of just his one. Side on.
Well, Madison Leonard doesn't allow any solar farms on that grid, just the ones they, his.
Mike, it's, it's on his.
It's on his barns, it's, and that's what I think.
Talking is like if you were gonna take a, a shoe field, you know, way down off, off the road. You know, to put, you know, fifteen panels back there, you know, get it to come out, we've gotta. Be able to have the fire department get down there, you know, there's a lot, lot to it. Or anything that's packed with your roof. It's, it's safe.
Oh, it is.
Safe for you, it's for you to, you, oh, either the application.
Okay, good questions. Uh, anything else from the board? Anything else for you guys? Jim, thanks for coming in. Uh, and we will close the public hearing uh, on the. Uh, we will enter the review and approve the minutes of November sixteenth.
Both of us and both of us, ladies' choice.
See none, all in favor, so everybody. Uh, now there's reports, start with you.
I got asked again if um, we had a timeline for the rail trail opening for access, that was gonna be this winter, or do we have any sort of updates on that?
So rail trail is gonna be open north of here this winter. Uh, there was a possibility of it being open downtown, but it's not looking that way. There's a slight chance that it's gonna be open south of town into Oakland, but. With not much traffic, just because of the nature of it. We're looking at next spring, ATVs having access. Um, and then hopefully with the trespassal, that that would be resolved before the end of summer. Next year, next snowmobile season would be in game. There are still landowners that are being dealt with, with the state level. Um, and then some bridge projects here and there that they're looking to address that. Right now we're tracked to ideally open, open. From the designated ground for snowmobile season next year.
Okay.
The threat will be a bit more so.
Yeah, has there been any update on the trespass, like what the plan is for that or?
I have it right now, the trespass will be a, uh. Be wide now, a lot. They're gonna put chain link up and they're gonna bank it with uh, what it's gonna be, it's gonna be covered. Uh, if we're gonna cover it, it's gonna require significant engineering. And probably three to four years before we see a buildup if there was still funding for the project. Um, I mean, I agree. I won't say the unilateral, it's a, you kind of felt that way. But we're in the road with snowmobile club, we're in the road with uh, snowmobiles in the state. And talking about the cost and benefit of this and rerouting and everything else, it did a bit. But financial or economic sense for us to hold out for the cover bridge.
Yeah, the only question I have with it not being covered now is. When that snow accumulates on there, even if it's being like packed down, those sides that are kind of protective barrier are gonna be getting smaller and smaller as that snow creeps up. So what is the plan for the? Does it plow it up?
Uh, yeah, so right, uh, the, the snow, uh, there's no official number here, I guess, uh, does have, uh. An older room that does have a plow on it, uh, as well as the drains. I mean, so the club would maintain it to keep.
So is there like a certain like inches that that sidewall has to be to maintain like safety?
It, it's not a size of those. Yeah, be quite honest with you, I probably see suicide events in it.
Yeah.
It actually was. It's attractive, genuine debate. From the picture of the Brian, it shows.
Hmm, okay.
Who's doing that, Brian?
No, the state, Brian Bronson.
That's total different beast.
Yeah.
Okay. Being, they use over mats, so they can.
All right, so uh, the only thing I had is, uh, wait. Sorry, three, four times a week, uh, maybe five, there's this lovely woman uh, who walks uh, and picks up trash. Meaning, God, if she is walking, she is picking up trash. Uh, and we don't really have anything official to recognize uh, volunteers in the community that do stuff that's not. Here or at the school. I mean, I'm sure there's more people that walk their section of road, uh, if you have a few family members who do the same. Uh, they're, they're kind of take care of the side of road on their road, uh, and I mean, it seems pretty trivial, but what a big difference it makes. I know on the Madison Road. Uh, makes quite a difference for the section that she picks up. And I think for any citizen to take that upon themselves and religiously do it, it is wow, you know? It should be recognized. Uh, I had ready to grab something for the lady who does uh, do, I believe she's aware, so I won't. Name her, I guess, right now, uh. For just a letter from the board uh, thanking her and I think uh, right, giving her a sweatshirt. For what she does with our new local one and such, uh. But if we want, if the board want to have Richard set something up on the, is that our Facebook or what is that, the town page?
Or the town page or here, or say the library or.
Where you can go on and kind of say, hey, so and so is, you know, doing this on my role or. And, you know, we have, e- everything on there is, we're negative. I mean, really. More negative stuff. So this is an opportunity for people to, you know, on fingers, something that's doing a good deed. Uh, but I think we could use more of that. I think the ones doing it should be recognized.
Yeah.
And I think the least we can do is give them a sweatshirt or give a certificate to some, something that we've come up with, uh, clearly not tonight, but.
What about something to keep, make what they are already doing like a little bit easier? Like maybe we get them some sort of like a reflective vest for when they're walking, or if there's something that makes like. You know, picking this stuff up like.
Good discussion. I think for tonight, I was just looking to see if the board had an interest in formally putting something together. Uh, and had Richard kind of lay something out so that we can make it happen online as well.
Yeah, online and maybe like a mention of the bridge or something like that too, if we have enough people like a, you know. Good Samaritan like spotlight or something like that in the bridge.
So, uh, that is really all I had, uh, as far as. There was something else too, but I can't really remember. So, well, that was a big one, uh, and we'll just go from that. I'll sign this for her, you'll receive the sweatshirt. Right, I'm sure, right, we'll mention again in the town or somewhere else, uh. So that's all I can, and moving forward, we'll jump right into the town management report.
Yeah, I'm gonna do all the tracks. Before, yeah, uh, we had a airport meeting this afternoon. Uh, good conversations out there, uh, things we talked about, uh. The supply of aviation ninety one on ethanol fuel, that's an issue now. We're trying to sort another, uh. Traffic work service brought to get that out there. It's a big moneymaker for out there. Um, so that's got some significant implications. They also reviewed the current financial status of the airport. Uh, which is about what it was last year, which is not in a possible position. Um, and the group that was there today was. Lots about the situation and trying to find revenues on the airport. So. Uh, under other business, which I had even planned when I did draw the business sheet, I'm gonna ask you to consider some of their recommendations. Uh, to increase fees out there. Uh, they are also seeking letters to hangar owners for them to declare the planes that are in each hangar. And if they refuse, then to potentially proceed with order interior inspectors. Um, and. They're looking at, you know, the possibility of, we've kind of set the, the terminal building aside, what's a significant federal brand. But they're looking at a maintenance facility and how we could make something happen that. They say that the airports that are in the region that are successful have that maintenance facility. Or how do we do that the smartest way possible with little to no cost to the town? Uh, obviously, if you're avoiding construction, that's a benefit, but, um, so that's one of the things that they walked away with today, um. Is one of their goals, to see if they could find people that were interested, and then if there was a place that was already there that they could plug them into. Um, and how we could facilitate that if it got to it. So, uh, very productive afternoon with them. Uh, back to what's in writing, uh, I attended a marijuana update last week with MMA. Uh, that was good, everything's constantly changing. They just put in a tobacco retail requirement. On these medical places. Right now, we've only got one medical marijuana dispensary that I'm not aware of, that's fully licensed. Uh, in the way that the state wants them to. So you're gonna see more practice for opt-in on medical, uh, but these, the, the businesses are gonna be out. Um, so I expect we're gonna see something very soon, I would think in terms of petition on that, um. We received our award from the county for Spirit of America, uh, for awarding, presenting it at town meeting and or recognizing it in the town report. We do that every year since twenty sixteen at the very least. So that's good. Please be thinking about Spirit of America recipients, that's the volunteer award. And we presented at town meeting. Last year, you decided you wanted to keep that offline, so please call me, text me, email me with that. Uh, any names there, also your town book dedication. Last year, the board said they wanted that off the books. And so send me any ideas that you have and we can take that. Um, into consideration. That time is coming very quick. Your nomination papers are now available, the list of all offices are posted here. Uh, and online, so you can check that out. Those papers are due back in or fifth. Lot of offices are gonna be open there. Uh, cycling review application for waste management's transfer station upgrade on the airport road. That has been received with its escrow money. All the mailings have gone out necessary and there's gonna be, see its first uh, planning board review tomorrow. I would think within two, maybe three months, there would be a permit come out of that. Seems pretty cut and dry with, you know, we're not getting into the ground or anything. It's. It's covered structures and it's really improving the overall facility. So. Um, in fact, we still pull away from the road, so it'd be less impactful to a butters, but we're gonna take a dive into that tomorrow. Uh, it's in person participation, we'll be screening that online as we usually do. A number of junkyard notices. I don't know if you've been here or you're seeing, but there are quite, we always say quite a few junkyards. The number of junkyards is. Lessening, uh, in a good way. We did a, a big push on my stream road, only that we're developing that. Um, for the parking ride enhancing the area, the attraction. Um, and so we've seen a lot of compliance, people are willing to work with us. But you're gonna continue to see that push as long as it goes along the ground, things aren't frozen in. Uh, it's an important part stretching along our main order. Um, obviously, if you have a junkyard, it's easier for you to self. Control than it is for us to have to start generating administrative costs and send mail-ins and things like that, psych visits and everything else. But, uh, you know, we don't wanna be seen from the road, it does no favors to you or your labor, so. Uh, but thank you to the folks that have been very compliant, committed with us about how they played to resolve their problems because a lot of these properties are already looking better. We know we have a lot of work to do, uh, but you know, Dave's run into a part of that, I bet. He's issued. Twelve fifteen plus. The last month, so, um, you know, it's, it's good and we're seeing investment in that time. The parking area, Ashland Park, thank you, my old DMO landscape, and I think, what did we have? Seven, eight, nine, ten locals, some contractors that were part of that project. If you haven't been down there, check it out. Uh, the parking area has come out great. And there's still some residual work that needs to be completed in the spring, but the vast majority of that project is done. The grant that we applied through for the state is closed out, that was taken up. Uh, and then we have the residual funds, that extra twenty thousand that we were gonna target for, um. The port body closure and the smaller things down there for spring. Um. But that was just a great project overall, and we did some extra molding, uh, down in the back to open that, plate it up. It's, 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 it's gonna be nice. And I think we'll make good use of the space there.
I have a question about that. Is the lighting, is that a spring thing? Is that going? Cause I know that we just talked about having lights there and then surveillance. Is that already in or is that a springtime thing or?
So the, the only thing that's been approved right now is hundred and twenty thousand for the development of the area, which included the parking area. Some drainage cleaning up towards the trail, widening that access point up and then the, um. Port body closures. That's the only phase that's been approved. We'll be talking to you about. Those things in the next couple of months.
Okay.
Building that as a part of the budget, um, or seeing what fund we wanna allocate that.
Sure, okay.
Uh, darker days. Finances are collected, your automatic foreclosure on April, May, June twenty twenty, so use charges, that's December seventeen. Right now I have two delinquent accounts that qualify for that. Uh, frequent flyers, for lack of other better phrases. Our global November, December twenty twenty one, so we use charges, though they're going to lean on the twenty second, we've got twenty two accounts to qualify there. And they are for closure on real estate taxes for twenty twenty. Those notices will be drawn out December twenty ninth. Uh, twenty one account, accounts are in that dilapidated status. Uh, offset that with the holiday stroll, tractor parade and free lighting this Saturday. We've got a pretty strong turnout, expected the weather's looking good. I think we've got fifteen, sixteen, seventeen different locations. We've got twenty, twenty two participants, but the parade. Uh, it's shaping up to be really nice between. The school and Duncan, it's really the, the bookends of the activities. Um, we've got board drop fires stepping up to help us with traffic control for the parade. Uh, we might have some backup from Smithfield. So it's all coming together really nicely and with the weather that they had last weekend for seven stroll. I think we're gonna see a good dose of people in the downtown, so, um, that should be productive. Use of our afternoon. One thirty one activity start, the parade begins at four, three, let it following that. Uh, theme has finalized my last open application that. They changed the regulations on my birth current, so things that didn't fall by the first time now qualifies and refilled all of those and added some extra fence. So we're able to get another eight nineteen thousand eight thirteen, uh, in COVID-related expenses reimbursed. Uh, there were a few larger expenses that we took out of reserve, um, like the shielding of the library, we're gonna go through, check, pick those up. And we'll put that back in the library, there's everything that was left of that, put it in the original state management account and leave that where it was before. Uh, Sandy River Road, that erosion project that abus, that Hilton's. It used to be the Hilton's land, maybe we think, uh, but now it's in the river. They've been out there clearing those trees in preparation for that work. Before regulations change with regards to cutting trees. And then the rec committee that last week to review the budget requests. Uh, and also discuss the programming changes. I think next year they're looking to incorporate travel. Into the rec program strictly because of the numbers and, uh, that is associated with anywhere to do it. And do it cooperatively with them. Jim's scheduling and everything else. So there is an incremental cost in their budget, we'll get into that at the next meeting, but, um, overall. Good progress made with them. And then they also wanted to proceed with purchasing a portable mound, which they've been talking about. They wanted to see where the budget settled at, so we authorized that purchase there. Assessing agents in tomorrow, down to our Saturday, library crust is meeting a week early because of the holiday.
Uh, discussion action on December seventh, general warrant number twenty three.
And we approve general warrant number twenty three in the amount of one hundred and twenty six thousand, one hundred and fifteen dollars and three cents.
On the second, uh, any further discussion? Seen done, most in favor? All right, uh, public comment. Anything from the public? Let's get it fired away.
Richard, how many tags do you get on that Facebook account? You get quite a few a day.
In terms of tax, you don't have Facebook, do you?
Yeah, I do.
Oh, what do you mean by tax?
Well, people looking at it, at it.
Oh, I mean, I can't really tell you. It depends largely on the content and sometimes you end up fishing for content that brought people to your page. And you, you can't, it just doesn't, I mean, I can check right now to. It, it's largely dependent upon the content that's there.
Right, I just, while we're kind of getting back to the structure thing, you know, I mean. It would be good to poach. I like his idea of poaching good things that people do. But I just thought, you know, if you don't see that on the Facebook page.
Well, this was just something that he mentioned to me this morning and then. Is it a missed opportunity? And I think it is. Whether you go and you buy, the rest of the best you can buy. I, I said a Yeti cup and you can set the town sale put into the side of it, something that's timeless and everybody can use it.
Yeah.
And it's just, you don't give them out all the time. Except one special thing where, okay, we're gonna recognize you, but this is really about, you ought to love that.
But I'm just, my, my thing is, I was thinking if you put, put this stuff like on Facebook, that would generate. Other people coming forward on what other people are doing.
Yeah.
Because there is. A pretty good sized group of people that do do these types of things.
Right, yeah.
Now, that's where it goes.
No, perfect, yeah, and I, I think we're.
You know, perfect, yeah. And I, I think we're gonna find a way to make this happen, uh, online here, in, in the best way that we can. Right. So, so there are fourteen people watching you on Facebook right now?
Yeah.
You don't know? Right now, in the minute.
Yeah, well, that's, that's what I'm getting at right there. It's fourteen people now. That's.
The last question I have, so it's gonna be something different.
And he did a great job. Really, I called this phone with it and it asked, yeah, yes, it did. I just, just trying.
Okay, uh, anything else for public comment, guys?
What are we talking budgets for?
Yeah.
But.
Yeah, yeah, just.
So department reviews are due by the PEP, which we've granted extensions to. Uh, road committee, we're gonna get together, but I couldn't get you together at black tonight because I have somebody that's interested in being, they're gonna be out on, on, on the other business. And so you're gonna see the next meeting. You're gonna see the first meeting in January. We're gonna be budget headed. But I can't. Or probably not gonna be fun, just negatively. I can't piecemeal the way we normally do it because I don't have the stability in my budget that I only have. Things are gonna be up and we're gonna be down. We're gonna have to pay for one of the pockets to move for another in order to create the best and stable budget. And so normally I'm comfortable saying, okay, well, we can send ops and we can send rep, can we send admin and view a piecemeal? We're not gonna be able to do that this year. Things are gonna be not so great, um, in the whole picture. And we don't wanna just automatically do it because we're gonna have to be really, really honest about the expenses and how to look at it in the shift. So.
Is there? More warning for us? On the road committee, we're gonna have to pay.
Well, I think you've done yourself a pretty good service by communicating with the board. Your needs are, you have a. And we only hope that when your budget comes up for consideration. It'll be hard to reach budgets. Working, we've got some revenues, right? Wait. Okay, anything else, guys? All right, uh, moving forward, uh, discussion action on signing a quick claim deed for six twenty-nine, it's going.
Wow, so moved.
Okay. I will let Richard explain this because, uh. Right, yeah, so this was your favorite lane when you stepped off. You may say for those who demand for twelve, everyone paid to follow us. And you were able to close that up. So, guess we'll get back on the tech calls in a bit. Time you made all your money back. And, uh, may it hold. Perfect, talk in the area, tell them the future. Exactly. Come on, Ken, and a second. Uh, any further discussion for the board? Seeing none, all in favor? And that's everybody. And thanks, man, for cleaning that up. That made that great, uh. Uh, other business. Right, that's some of the add discussion action on donation statement. So.
Second.
Second, uh, discussions, none, all in favor? Everybody. Uh, we received a hundred dollars from Joseph and Leona Coria to support community food access. Uh, side note, that tip brought them, they have been giving everyone this year. Thanks for going. So, make thanks to them. Relatively new, they're not new to the area, they're new to town. Um, and they've been faithful ever since COVID hit and they were taking them to the church.
Okay, I move that we accept that hundred dollar donation for community food access.
Second. Motion to second, any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor? And that's it. Uh, discussion action on appointments to the agenda, please.
Second.
Second, uh, any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor? So everybody. I have a nominee for the road advisory committee and I don't know, let my overseat to you real quick. You didn't notice this coming, but, uh, he has been a pounding pavement. He's asked me points of pound pavement. To find people that would be, uh, constructive addition to the team, so.
Skip and I. He, he brought the big market. I brought to him, um, it don't have to be a resident, that would already work. He on road community. So we're trying to find. People that would be good for the road committee and, uh, Jeff Lloyd's name could be in the mix and he's retired from the business now. I called him and he said he'd love to do so. Has no problems with it. The only stipulation he had was he's going forward. Could we, if we do anything in the months of January, February and mid-March? He can do it. On computer. I said, I said, I'm pretty sure that could be all done and set up. So if you guys, if he's willing to do it, I think you would be a really good. Uh, member because he's got the background for it.
What's his background like?
Yeah, I mean, it's just, that's what we're looking for.
Can you give us the background of Jeff? I don't know.
I told you, it's not that, no, he's running a dump up with him and he has a lot of, you know, the boy, his brother was by Lloyd's son. Yeah.
Oh, boy, I thought you were going to point, oh, boy, what do you have, boy? That's why we took my hair out.
Fifty-six years, I mean, broke by three days. So I mean, it would seem like it would be a really well fit. And we're down to two members now, so. In all his third row would be.
Both qualified, you're gonna get.
Yeah.
Thank you guys for piling in.
I didn't realize that the. Presidency didn't have anything to do with it, which is kind of helpful. So if you can. He still owns dog.
But regardless, it is like, if they don't have to begin, right? Yeah.
But I think he does still own dog and releases it to whoever. Mining on the analysis, pretty shows.
Excellent, uh, so why entertain the motion from the board?
I move that we appoint Jeffrey Lloyd to the road advisory committee.
Can you talk, Richard? I said, I don't know. What, what the hell do you mean?
Okay, so there's a board in a second. Any further discussion from the board? Seeing none, uh, all in favor? Excellent, thank you, Mike. Uh, could I get more discussion action on real estate closing of the agenda?
So.
More than a second, uh, any further discussion, seeing none, all in favor? So everybody. Uh, so as a part of the process for closing, we've had a closing day on Gilman Drive extended to the fourteenth. Um, I don't work all done. We're trying to get the deed done and the seller's attorney is. Making some errors. So anyway, we're working our way through that, but as a, a technical, I need your authorization to accept delivery of a warrant deed from. Robert W. Gilman, Jr. to execute any and all necessary paperwork reasonably incident to the acquisition of the red property on Gilman Drive. Taxman twenty-eight, lot six-two-two, which was authorized by the article two vote on November eighth, special time being.
So moved.
That's it. Motion to second, uh, any further discussion? The only discussion I have, that's right, we've been down, we've been through, right? We've physically laid eyes on everything down there. Well, we have a vote, yeah, right.
So, but we, what's, what's the full picture signed down here by the federal church now? With, with, I thought I saw a sign down there that said, pull up that.
So they have, from what I gather, they've not communicated to us. They have a satellite. Not an entry. There's no door to work. And they just bring food in for the day and then they take it out. There's no food storage on site.
And it's like, oh, I, I just kind of, I saw that sign up in like.
Yes, it did say that.
I, I just, just have to.
Yeah. Uh.
That's not a sanctioned one.
It isn't, it isn't. It's not an actual pantry. There's no food storage on site. It's, it's Madison, folks.
Okay.
Uh, right, so we will, when will we actually physically be able to go down after that is signed?
Soon as it's signed.
Okay.
Yeah, all right.
On the song, and board, any other discussion? Uh, seeing none, all in favor? And that's. All right, and I have one off the tracks, which would be, uh, motion to add, have gotten an action on airport advisory committee recommendations. What can I say? Second, uh, any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor? So everybody. All right, so the airport advisory committee met this afternoon. Right now they're being faced with about a fifteen thousand dollar shortfall this year. Uh, revenues against expenses for an operation affected. Uh, and so my path today was richly gap. And so the gap that they have recommended to you as of today. Uh, would be to increase the state police fee. For air runway use rental from one hundred and fifty dollars a day. To three hundred and fifty dollars a day. And to increase hangar fees from forty-five dollars a month to sixty dollars a month. That will generate slightly over fifteen thousand dollars more per year in revenue if things stay the same.
What's the breakdown of, how much is it that the state police are paying of that fifteen thousand versus the increase in the hangar fees?
The state police have covered about five thousand dollars.
Okay, so the hangar fees is the bulk of it. Okay, all right.
That means state police, so main criminal, that's Academy or it's just the whole?
It's the runway rate.
The runway rental rate would change.
So I mean, to me, that sounds like a pretty steep, you go from a hundred and fifty dollars a day to three fifty a day. Well.
Yeah.
That's a bit of a. That's a steep, you know?
Yeah.
Correct, one double.
Right.
Without notice.
Yeah, so the, their recommendation is move everything effective in every one. They understand the implication, but they also understand that may think police has had that rate of problems fifteen year. They at least, hangar fees have increased in ten. And so even if you just take the cost of the dollar then versus the cost of the dollar today. And they have pledged today with the first time to review rates. Every year. And what we're finding is what I had found and I accept that. If they're, the airport has fallen. Same victim as the sewer department did. Where we just let things go. We want to be the bad guy. We want to increase rates and they're finding themselves in the hole. And then all of a sudden you have to need to react and. And move. And. It. It's gonna move to break you. So I'm gonna move within the right direction to move to break you. Um, but I get the state police thing with the lengthy discussion. There was discussion about, you just put a ten thousand dollar contract out there for X number of days and then additional days beyond that. And there was a factor about both agencies and how that would be handled. And then the cost of a contract with the state. Uh. All those factors. And then it really boiled down to the fact that for three hundred and fifty dollars a day, the actual use of the facility is still very affordable. And.
You have to shut the airport down when they do.
Well, that's gonna. So the runway is pretty much designated, and when somebody comes in, they ready to win and then. The, the train stops so that they can safely pass and land. Um, the, the other discussion was, which I, I mean, I kind of started it, but. By us offering low-cost rentals to. The trading organizations with theoretically subsidized, obviously, other towns, expense, the city of Portland, the city of Bangalore, the main state police. Of which offer us no service, no benefit really, um, on the whole, um. They were doing that as a favor to them and we shouldn't be shortchanging ourselves. The three fifty days still very affordable.
So my only concern is, you know, I agree that the airport certainly needs to generate some revenue, but. As people plan these expenses, if we plan our budget out. You know, for the next two years, three years, you know, we've got these costs and we increase them five percent or ten percent. So you're gonna go. Seventy percent, eighty percent increase. A month from now. Without any notice.
It's more than double. I mean, like, it's more than a hundred percent increase, yeah.
One hundred percent.
Yeah, it's.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, it's more than double.
It seems like, uh, you know, and do what you're gonna do. I, I'm not gonna vote for that if you're looking for a vote. I think a more. Similar to walking down to the sewer, we increase those gradually and people have noticed, your users have noticed that they're gonna be. An increase, not thirty days from now, you're gonna go up one hundred and thirty percent on your fees and there really isn't another game in town. Uh. So, yeah, I have a little bit of an issue with that.
I, I, I too, I mean, I'm not saying that the three hundred and fifty isn't a reasonable cost for that. I just think that. The, the increase percentage wise of it is. You know, fairly extreme where, you know, going from like forty-five to sixty bucks on like the monthly rental. I don't feel like that's, I mean. I feel like that's like little itty-bitty one. This one's like, let's blow it up. So I think that there's a few, trying to get to the number. I think that we should be. Not, maybe it's like a graduated plan, like over five years, like it goes up to this, you know? You know, it's at one fifty now, it goes to two twenty-five next year. And then the year after that, it might go up to three. And then the year after that, it goes up to the three fifty. But I think going from one fifty to three fifty, like. I feel like that's kind of. Uh.
Yeah, but been ten years since you.
Yeah, no, and that's why there needs to be an increase. I just think all at once.
Well, you gotta think of what you're doing. I brought my kids to the bounce house in Scoween. You can't rent out bounce house for two hours for a hundred and fifty bucks. That's, you gotta think about what you're getting, sure, right? You don't want them to go somewhere else that they.
There, there is no.
I mean. But, you know, they, them being in town, they used to come, they used to come. The diner, and you'd have a hundred of those offices at the diner, you know? Uh, but you've got to think what you're getting. I mean, you can't rent anything for, for a hundred and fifty bucks. So I'm only going to, you know, these budgets are a year, two, three years out.
Yeah.
If, if we knew this fee was gonna increase by a hundred and twenty percent. You can prepare for that.
Right.
But that budget's already set in place for the next three years. It's not a huge amount of money. I mean.
But it's a couple, very tight house, so of course.
Yeah, but I mean, that's lying in somebody's budget somewhere. If they knew like, okay, in January first, we're gonna be going up to this amount next year. People can prepare for that. They can prepare their budgets. They can have those discussions. They can make an alternative plan if they wanna go somewhere else.
But diesel fuel, I think in the last month and a half, my diesel bill went up. Down. Right, uh, you know, and I.
We don't.
Yeah, I just feel like it's kind of like an act of good faith. It's always been a good working relationship. It's good for the town. It's good for everybody, like, to. You know, more than double their, just like, I don't know. I, I think that if we're looking, I'm all for the airport coming up with more money and generating their own stuff. Like I am, believe me. I think that maybe it can, you know, either be like a one or two step process, or we can look at the hangar fees going up a little bit more to cover that bridge.
And what, what is the avenue of renting, collateral minimum of the airport? So that, you know, that.
You have to come with the same.
For a hundred and fifty dollars, hey, I would. Rent that out just to.
Yeah.
Right off, right off, right? Yeah. Yeah.
Yeah, there's a lot of liability for coming and burning rubber. Yeah, no.
I don't wanna insert myself to the. To the politics, but I'm going to anyway. I get the heartburn about a job. But the North Rock taxpayers have seen fuel prices double. We've seen unexpected labor increases. Hooks have just increased twice this year, which you don't think about four cents on the bill, but when you send out ten thousand letter a year and all that stuff. To pay increase for somebody that we're putting on envelope now. And if we face all those increases, the airport's gonna continue to lose money. And the president's been a shoulder back debt. It's gotta be the North Rock taxpayer.
Well, I'm not saying we don't come up with the same amount of money. I'm just saying, are we looking at? The fee structure for the hangar rentals, like, is that comparable to other airports? I feel like even with that increase, it's still significantly lower and cheaper than other places. And is that maybe where we should be looking for this jump in to bridge it? I mean, other airports our size, what are they paying? I'm guessing it's still even at the sixties significantly less, isn't it?
So everybody's fees are true different. It doesn't go apples to apples. A lot of them, people own them. The way that they do here, they're just strictly paying for the limbs underneath.
Yes.
Ten feet around or something like that. Um. I struggle with it because it's the airport advisory that it's almost like a, a pilot. Agency group at the same time where you're piloting this, this airport. And. You're asking the pilots to take on ten grand worth of deficit and another government led to the, it's more diversified. It's not a North Rock taxpayer to take on some of that. And so I was pleasantly surprised that there was a balance there trying to do that. Cause the discussion today was about. Them. Trying to find other revenue sources, which, you know, you can play with gas prices and see if you can drive that, but. There's a lot, they talk about renting the facility, the facility, when they start renting this remote and there's a cost associated to that, um. They really did it all. And they were unanimous in it. So. And I do feel that what sets forth right now is the recommendation from that committee. Now we all have our own views and then what. Heck, as tradition says, I mean, it comes from that committee and we review what they've brought forth and we can either send it back to them for a different review, but I don't. Think you would behoove us to make changes and say this is what that fee will be today, uh.
This, we're gonna get rid of the speed bar all these days, yeah.
But I, 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 very well, I mean, that is the point. I mean, so. That, that could have happened, uh. So I, I really, for myself, I would like to see us take it as what it sends here, whether we either go with what they've brought to us or we don't. I personally don't wanna make changes to their fees that they've set forth, uh. But it is a discretion. As to whether if you want to try to make changes and say it's a hundred and fifty-five dollars a day, you could do, uh. But I do feel that it's not a tradition or what we only do is take the. Recommendation of the committee below us, either get your name.
Typically do, but I think in a situation like this, where I get, I know that it's not apples to apples, but I feel like we typically have, you know. Other entities that are similar enough that we can see what, I mean, just like with the solar stuff, we're looking at other communities, what their fee structure was. I think that without knowing what other airports are charging for fees, we don't know if this is the best way to, you know, bridge that. That, that's what I'm wondering is. Should we be looking at that?
We're wanting back to for that information.
Airborne runway, you're not gonna find another comparable because there's no one else in the state that has that. That are the only game in town. And I don't, I don't have a problem. And I don't, I don't have a problem, you know, with their recommendation, my only concern is. You know, as as Mike has mentioned, you know, diesel fuel doubled, well, there's no expense at the airport that has increased, except they're toward money. And now they're gonna put their fee up in a thirty day period, they're gonna go from a hundred and fifty bucks to three fifty of them, you know. If their their expenses were more, if they had to clear those runways with snow. If they had to, you know, report a potty, it's, I mean, on and on and on. Monetary expenses, are the diesel fuel that plows the runway, the gentleman that mans that tower, and radio us for them to stop. We, I mean, what did we just pay for the upgrade communications and fuel pump? So we have expenses, that they have these, they fluctuate from year to year, right? And after just doing wages and all that, replacing people, we certainly can see how losing someone and having to hire someone else. Now, it certainly can cost you substantially more than what you were paying a month ago. Uh so there are increases, and I do feel that board has brought forth a. Uh uh unanimous and reasonable, uh. Ask, uh or a plan, if you will, so I I don't think we can undercut that they think that there's.
No, it's more than just happened, I think, for ten years.
The thing with, with percentages, it's really based off the number that you're going with, so. If it's, if you were renting it out a thousand dollars a day, and they on average a hundred and fifty to five thousand, like thirty three days. No, a hundred percent increase would be sixty thousand dollars, see what I'm saying, you're talking about a hundred and fifty dollars. That a hundred percent increase is nothing on a hundred and fifty dollars, when, you see what I'm saying, well, you know, it's not thousands of dollars we're talking about. Um.
Do you know, from five thousand a year to thirteen thousand a year, uh.
But if it was, if the rent fee was a thousand dollars, and they were doing it thirty three days, that'd be that thirty three thousand, a hundred percent. You know, that's what I'm saying, when you're talking a hundred and fifty bucks, you can't rent the bounce house for a hundred and fifty bucks, so. I just.
Thirty days, no, it isn't enough for a hundred and twenty.
In that amount, yeah, right.
Sure, that's, that's reasonable, so.
Yeah, no, I I agree with Jim, and then I just, I'm just curious if no increases in those fees in a decade. And then the first increase is only fifteen bucks, is that really, like, keeping with the rate of inflation and keeping, you know, competitive? Or is this, it it's an advisory board where, you know, all the ones who are advising probably do have airplanes there, so it behooves them not to do a fifty dollar one. But if it was non, um, you know, maybe people who are outside of that, would they still agree on fifteen? Or is it because of the direct, that's what I I wanna make sure that we're looking at?
If you take strict inflation and you take the forty five dollars when it was set, today is fifty eight forty one. I come with money, I just wanna cop the money, if you take state police and put that back ten years, a hundred and fifty turns into one ninety four seventy. At the tournament, right? Just on the dollar. Yeah, that's all.
I say, this is the first time I've said in a meeting that the actual airport committee has come up with a plan. So I'm giving the kudos.
And is that on top of the like twenty that we already give them?
Hangar fees.
Each year? The miss?
Hangar fees, fuel, and rental. Well, I mean, I probably should have done a few, but I was trying to be expedient, and I didn't know if they were gonna make a decision today, which is why it wasn't on your agenda. But we've looked at fuel sales, fuel sales are down, we're down about five thousand gallons this year, over last. Uh margins are the same because it's, you know, but your car process and fees are up significantly. So they're they're losing money, and that right now, I'm losing ground, right? We're forecasting to lose about thirty five thousand dollars this year to the airport.
In in my view, it just, it seems like the actual, using it should be the ones covering that bridge, um.
Well, but again, about raising prices, the, I mean, thirty three days out of the year, state troopers are using it. The rest of the days, these people, you know, if you raise their rates and they start going away, then what's the point of having an airport?
I can pretty, I would actually, that was split, and we're bored tonight, we're not fired, uh. It's really a matter of whether we want to send this back to them for reconsideration, or whether we want to. Put it onto our agenda to review things like hangar fees, comparables, uh. Either with the board, uh, yeah, I know, you're not gonna buy a hangar fee cost, because everybody structures them differently, we've tried in the way that they all measure out, it's like. We try to determine my compensation, but I leave a little bit of fourteen job titles behind me, and then you go to Skowhegan, oh.
We did do something to do that with you, we had other tips, like.
Right, but you don't get what you, what I have for job titles behind me, what I do, you go to their store and say, okay, well, they'd be five thousand dollars, yes, but they'll suddenly say, there's a set. And they weren't for the animal, so it's. There are different things at different airports, and the way that's all structured, like gas prices, I can look at gas prices, that will subsidize, the town subsidizes the gas. So they can sell the pilots below cost. So really, it's that, that's whether we wanna kick it back to them for review, or schedule something for our agenda. And try to make sense of ourselves with the issues that Richard has mentioned, where it would be difficult to compare, but that is the norm, right? Everybody does them.
Yeah.
Comparing, um. It's really at our pleasure, I don't wanna kick them back, so I don't wanna discourage the good work that they. Value, where we do appreciate what they got, regardless of what we decide here tonight, truly, I mean, really, it is nice to have a plan.
Oh, no doubt, I just, I've got that one concern, that's all, just shortcuts for a big problem, that's.
It is very. But you were a budget to replace for two years ahead of time of the season.
How would they, they probably didn't use it this time of year? Uh, they're not, they'll be there in April.
In April, yeah. April.
Right, so they're gonna have some time to figure it out anyways.
I mean, for myself, I would vote it through as it is, I mean, that's my own personal, you know what I mean, uh.
I just, if, I mean, if you're talking about doing fifty percent on a hundred and fifty bucks, I might be able to buy lunch for that, I mean, it means.
And so, we are here to look out for the best, if it's all the D word, long past bears. Not to de-credit the state main, but I mean, where you're.
Eventually it comes out of your pocket, anyway, right?
And, you know, the other concern is where we haven't increased in rates out there for so long. They're obviously each year, their financial, you know, standing gets a little bit worse and worse. Next year, if this gap is still there and is bigger, are they going to be putting it back on the board that they up those fees again? I mean, is this?
That's what Richard stated, is that this, we have a fairly proactive board now, who seems that they will be reviewing this yearly.
Okay.
As well as it seems like they have more stuff in the works to look at and make some decisions on maybe a master plan or the direction of the airport. With a long term point, they need to be on the road. They committed a meeting again in July, that's where the first half expenses book, they wanna look and see where they're at, so that they're able to announce. There will be increases again next year, it's, so it's never any additional new inflation.
Yeah, yeah, I just wanna make sure we're doing that, because, you know, their pitfall, that fifteen, that's on top of the twenty that the town, twenty thousand that the town already gives them. So I mean, it's really like, it's thirty five thousand that they need to, like, come even, so. I just wanna make sure that we're keeping that, like, top of mind, that they, you know, this is something that is not just not breaking even or making money, it's losing a significant amount of money.
To somewhat break even, we would call this the way it is, and if you want them to wait and possibly hold off, they'll lose a little bit more money for next year.
Yeah. But again. If it's up for review every year, then that's something that I think I'm okay with, it's just, I don't want this to be like what's set for the next ten years, and.
Sure.
They made this little budget, but it's not really in the grand scheme of things.
The the board continues to meet for next year, and now they don't have a fallout, and then there's no one to meet, because if you have a road committee, there's only one guy. You know, I mean, it's pretty, you know what I mean, uh so they could be the same, well, I mean, ideally, they're a full board of seven, seven. And that holds true for next year, and you certainly wanna entice them to continue.
The board members are the pilots, that.
Uh, I I'm not actually sure who makes up the airport advisory committee.
Six pilots, that, one non-pilot, six hangar owners, one non-hangar owner. Three North Rock residents, four on.
So you're gonna actually consist of the airport, they're okay, they're on break going up.
Yeah, that's why we, that's why we, that's why we're at this position, because they've never been willing to do this, it's the airport.
Yeah.
Nobody wants to shove it down their throat.
No, and you can't deny this, the finances.
Well, I'm glad that we're finally looking at it, and there's like other solutions coming up that aren't just on the taxpayer, so.
I think it's gonna be more palatable too, with those fee increases as we start development. You know, I'm using porter potties, you might have a bathroom facility you can use, you've got, you know, used to eat your lunch, that's on or a tent somewhere. You know, as this progresses, I think it'll be more, more palpable, so.
Also, I will entertain a motion of any kind, whether it is to send it back or.
I move that we accept the airport committees, uh.
There's a motion, it's second, can we set it as it is, uh any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor? That's three, opposed, sorry, I'll be the opposing. Just for that reason, not this, you know, it's not short notice of the, yeah, that's the only, but again, I I thank them for meeting and review. So, okay, anything else on your other business?
No.
This is more than any progress. Uh.
And I move adjourned.
Yes, motion and a second, uh any further discussions, seeing none, all of your favor, that's everybody.